Stop going.
Yes.
Good. I want to start off by thanking Vicker and Peter Solstrom for getting me all set up and also for reviewing part of my PowerPoint as well as my presentation. I owe a lot to them. When the vicar first saw the join right here. Oh, what peace we often forfeit. Oh, what needless pain we bear, all because we do not carry everything to God in prayer. Amen. Our title for this Bible study is entitled Practical Prayer Practices. It's based on
It's God's will.
This is intended to be interactive. Now, I want each of you to take a few minutes and think about this. What do you want to get out of this Bible study?
I would like to get better at prayer, at prayer, and especially maybe taking the time to actually do it because actually I think I'm such a wimp at praying, but I keep it short as Martin Luther says. You know, and I think it is good enough, but I think that I could do better.
Awesome. Hopefully that'll do this for you.
Yeah.
But also I think so many times in prayer, we always focus on like wants, especially like right now, like so many of us are probably wanting and saying, oh, we need things, but also always remembering like the Thanksgiving part of prayer should always be extra in there.
Legally. Anyone else? What do you want to get out of this?
Attification and enlightenment.
I'm sorry?
Attification and enlightenment.
Awesome. Better understanding of God's will for us. Thank you. Anyone else? Now let's talk about the title. What's the importance of the word practical? That you can use easily. So what's your understanding?
Usefulness.
Usefulness. That is my intention in this whole Bible study for you. Definition for prayer. Other definitions. Not that that isn't a great one.
To praise God.
To praise God. Robin, look like you want to say something. I'm sorry? I thought pray for and what we dare not pray for. Playing the New England Patriots in the Super Bowl. Not pray hard enough.
Well, it is praying for others.
How do you understand the word practices? What do you think I'm getting at with that word?
Habits.
Habits.
A routine.
Normal routine.
But you're always learning.
Do without what?
You're always learning.
Yeah, you're always learning. Hey, Dan Chemnitz, great to have you here.
Good to be here. I don't know
in the world. They seldom qualified for the Tour de France. See what's on the left side?
Slow down thanking Him and praising Him and reminding myself of who He is. Into thinking in various things and then start in the prayer for others and then started including self in a way that I have of doing it, but it helps me to slow down and to remember who I'm talking to and remember what He does and remember what I have to be thankful for before I launch into any of the requests, whether for myself or others. And I think that's helped me a lot. The way that I think about Him and His way in general.
Anybody else want to share their present?
Mine is similar to mine. I basically do for my practices is first I give honor to others and then include myself as you know, my spirit towards the end is always at His will. So those are just simple practices that I basically do.
Thank you. Some of this goes back to shared with us before, the ACTS that we're going to talk about later. The Passion, Confession, Thanksgiving.
Sirens.
You know what trigger they use in Muslim countries?
That siren called a prayer.
Yeah, the siren called a prayer. I used to envy them until this morning. I never counted up how often I prayed during the day. But the Muslims, they have to pray five times a day. They have to pray at dawn. That's before the sun comes up. They have to pray midday. They have to pray late, later part of the afternoon. They have to pray just after sunset. And then they have to pray between sunset and midnight. Even in my simplistic prayer practices, I pray in the morning and the evening, which gives me two. I pray for three meals, which gives me five. And then like Joyce said, you see something on Facebook or somebody will send me a text and say, hey, Ed, will you pray for me? Okay, I can even beat the Muslims. And that's meant humorously.
That's another thing, like praying throughout the day, you know, if I, I mean, a lot of times like if I'm just driving along and see something really beautiful, you know, landscape with, you know, pasture and beautiful cows out there and everything and just make it a point to, to give prayers of thanks for beauty of things that I'm seeing. And just because it's so striking and, you know, realizing where that comes from, God made it all. And to be joyful and thankful in prayer too, as well as not always just making requests all the time, which is fine to make requests, but that can't be all of it. There's got to be thanks and praise as well. But that happens, you know, many times throughout the day with things.
Well, sometimes Pastor, I, I don't know, I ask God to help, you know, I don't know what to pray for. I ask God for guidance to, do you know what I mean? I, I'm not sure where I'm going with, with, I, I, it's confusing, I know, but I sometimes I just don't know. So I ask God to help me to realize what, you know.
Catherine, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have you read a Bible passage when we get to it about where we can find that help.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to focus on a little bit here, that, that whole aspect of pray continually, pray without stopping, prayer never ends, that has bothered me for many, many years. But really what it's talking about is having a mind focused on God. For example, Atlanta traffic is beautiful now. That's the thing I love most about shelter in place. Is Atlanta traffic is awesome. Every Monday I have to go for physical therapy to Tucker. No problem whatsoever. I used to allow an hour and a half. Now I can do it in 40 minutes. Awesome. But let's say you're driving in Atlanta traffic and someone cuts you off and you slam on the brakes and you stop a few inches. If your mind is focused on God, what do you say right away?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lord, thank you, Jesus. And
Please make that giver pay attention.
And you have to bear with me in this Bible study, because of my age, if a thought comes into my head and I don't share it, it's gone. Sometimes I'm going to jump ahead and we'll get back to it and, and so forth. But I was challenged once that I pray about too little things. My things are too little because my God is too big? I don't think so. I was trimming hedges the other day. Don't tell my therapist. I already got in trouble for it. And all of a sudden the hedge trimmer stopped. And I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. I only got one more bush. So I prayed. Find out the hedge trimmer is fine. I just cut through the cord. So what did I say? Thank you, Jesus. So so daily we've talked about how often we pray. Is it possible that we pray occasionally? Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
During difficult times only? I love it in movies where somebody's going to pray to God because nothing else has worked. And they say, Lord, I don't ask much of you. Lord, I haven't talked to you often. Yeah. Has your prayer practice changed since COVID-19?
No.
Not really.
Awesome. Dan Chemnitz, do you want to say something?
Well, if you're talking to God all the time, the circumstances that come up and he says that it's going to work out for your good, nothing's changed, huh?
Right. I, the vicar shared something with me that I want to share with you now. Would somebody please read this?
Google searches, Google searches for prayer have surged worldwide in, and then that next word is blocked on my screen. Okay. With the surge of emerging cases of COVID-19, according to a European researcher. The rising interest in seeking information about prayer on Google skyrocketed during the month of March 2020 and COVID-19 went global, wrote Janet Sendingsen, an associate professor in the Department of Economics at the University of Copenhagen, Denmark, and executive director of the Association for the Study of Religion, Economics, and Culture.
Somebody read the next thing?
Using Google Trends data on internet searches for prayer for 75 countries, she said she found that search intensity for prayer doubles for every 80,000 new registered cases of COVID-19.
Isn't it interesting what we can do with statistics now in the computer?
Yeah.
Isn't that interesting? The worse it gets, the more people that are praying.
Praying.
Another thing is, what did they have to do before they could pray?
Find out how.
Find out.
They had to search. They had to search. What does that say? Not a lot of people know a lot of prayers, do they? Or do they know how to pray even?
Do they know how to? Yeah.
Right. How important is prayer in a Christian's life?
It is extremely important.
Here's something from our buddy Martin Luther. Someone read that, please?
To be a Christian without, go ahead.
Go ahead, April.
To be a Christian without prayer is no more possible than to be alive without breathing.
Melissa, you take the last part.
Prayer is not optional equipment for the Christian.
Yeah. I remember driving down to Florida when I was a mission counselor in January, which is just nutso because they have all those old timers from the north driving down there. And what's the one thing none of them know how to use?
Blinkers.
It's optional equipment to them. Prayer cannot be optional equipment for us. Does anybody know the name of this painting? Don't think so hard.
Prayer.
Grace.
Okay, yeah.
Pastor, would you please say grace? And then I always say to them, grace. No, I want you to pray. This was a photograph, this was painted from a photograph taken by Eric Enstrom in 1918. His daughter is the one that painted it, Rhoda Nyberg, and it's a painting. And the picture that is of a man by the name of Charles Wildin, who was a peddler in 1918 who sold foot scrapers. You know, we're still selling them today, right? You ever seen those Dinfo commercials? Where you have that scraper that scrapes the dead skin off the bottom of your foot?
Yeah.
And Eric Enstrom saw him sitting at his table and took a picture of him. And it was taken in 1918. What was happening in the United States at that time?
The end of World War One.
End of World War One?
Spanish flu.
Spanish flu. I just thought that was quite ironic. All of those things happening and we get a picture that is one of the most famous pictures of prayer today. Excuse me. Here's a hymn verse that I had to memorize as a kid. It's not in our present hymnal. Pastor Sharp, is it going to be in our new hymnal?
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Would somebody please read this verse?
Prayer is the Christian's vital breath, the Christian's native air. His watchword at the gates of death, he enters heaven with prayer. It's a good thing you didn't ask me to sing it.
Could have done a duet, Kristen. Thinking of COVID-19. Look at those two last lines. What are most people having a problem with when their family member dies of COVID-19? They're dying what?
Alone.
Alone. Are they alone?
No.
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 The more I've worked on this, this Bible study, and when I talked to pastor about it, this Bible study came about because three years ago I wanted to improve my prayer life. So I picked up all of the classic books on prayer. In fact, one of them was 900 pages long. Wow. I did read it. That's why it took me three years. So I asked past was a time where he wouldn't bring us the girls. It's interesting that it turned out to be COVID-19. When prayer is one of the hottest topics right now. Have you noticed how newscasters are even saying, you're in my thoughts and
Prayers.
Prayers. One newscaster who never did it before, he does it now. God bless, is what he says at the end. Just, just something to think about. Is prayer your first resource or your last resort?
First.
Yeah, it should be, shouldn't it? Have you ever seen this on a television drama? A doctor has very bad news for the patient. Here, this is a picture of a doctor telling a young husband about his wife's physical condition. She's in intensive care, not a lot of hope for her living. This is what she says. Someone please read it.
I have done all I can do. All we can do now is pray.
Last resort? We should have started off with what?
Prayer.
Prayer.
I don't know if my daughter Kristen remembers this, but when she went in for brain surgery, I had the chance to have prayer and the surgeon was in the room and I asked him if he would mind. Kristen, you remember what he said? I can use all the help I can get. I didn't think that was real encouraging. Kind of like the okay AT&amp;T commercial? What kind of doctor is he? Well, he's okay. Here's one of the first prayer things that I shared with people. When I started sending out a word of encouragement, which is something I send out every day to my family, my military friends, and I also send it out to my elder families that, that I'm responsible for. Robin and April, you getting these? Do you get the words?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is one of the first ones I sent out. Prayer trumps panic. Prayer trumps panic every time. And I'm not talking about the president. Let me ask you this question. Does prayer really work?
Yes.
Yes. Can anybody give me some proof?
Hezekiah.
Dan?
Hezekiah.
Hezekiah. Do you remember that? When Isaiah came to him and said what?
Get your house in order.
Yeah, get your house in order because you're gonna what? Die. And before the prophet left the king's palace, what did the king do?
Turned his face to the wall and prayed.
Yeah, he prayed. And what did the Lord say to the prophet?
I'll give you, tell him I'll give him 15 more years.
Go on back in there. Tell him he ain't gonna die soon. Prayer does work. Some more Bible evidence of this. Somebody please read James 5:13 to 15.
I'll get it.
Thanks, Peter.
The prayer of faith. Is anyone among you in trouble? Let them pray. Is anyone happy? Let them sing songs of praise. Is anyone among you sick?
We lost you, Peter.
Uh, let them call the elders of the church to pray over them and anoint them with oil in the name of the Lord. And the prayer offered in faith. Am I cutting in and out again?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk quieter. And the prayer offered in faith will make the sick person well. The Lord will raise them up. If they have sinned, they will be forgiven.
What do you think of that Bible passage?
I've often wondered why we don't anoint. That's another topic.
Answer that question.
Want to pray and try?
Why don't we, why don't the elders anoint people with oil anymore?
Well, that's not the way we did it at my old church.
And, and, and we have, uh, people, we pay a lot of money to anoint us with oils, the medical professions. That, I mean, a lot, so a lot of the anointing with oil would have been description of some of the healing practices they might have used. Uh, you would have brought something to help them physically, and then also you pray for them spiritually, so, um, there could probably take a lot longer to answer that question, but that's a short one. If you want me to keep going, I can.
Thank you.
Thanks, pastor. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just thought you'd have a better answer than me.
No, that's right. I, I was just searching for the title of that hymn to find out if it is in the new hymnal.
It wasn't the old one. But yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we call the elders more often?
Pastor's job.
We now have medical personnel. You have to remember, in James 8, first century AD, there were not a lot of doctors that had their shingles hung up. So a lot of times if a friend was sick, you would go over and you would take whatever you had known that would make them better and apply it to their sore. And many times it was what? Olive oil.
Olive oil.
Remember the, the parable of the good Samaritan? What did he do with the man? He anointed him with oil. Where'd he get the oil? When you traveled, you always carried what with you? Olive oil. For many, many reasons, but also to anoint the sick. And back to Dan Chemnitz's question, why don't we do it anymore? I think pastor has answered that. I have done it on occasion when people asked for it. When people deliberately said, in fact, the guy handed me the bottle of olive oil. Extra virgin, by the way. Extra virgin olive oil. And, uh, and I went ahead and did that just because he would feel better. Now, it wasn't magic, and he didn't understand it to be magic. What about verse 15?
Pastor, can I, uh, can I share something?
Yes, ma'am.
Real quick, um, you know, does prayer really work? That question, this is an old story. Well, um, everyone's heard this. When we, I, when we went to Jerusalem, um, pastor and my husband and, and we got into some really bad turbulence. I mean, bad, like three, three hundred, three, 30,000 feet, which I didn't think that was possible, you, you know. Anyway, I stood up and I said, "Please pray for us," pastor. And it was 3:30 in the morning. Of course, I woke up the whole plane, but I said, "Pastor, did you pray?" He said, "Yeah." You know what I mean? So maybe it worked. We don't know what.
If Pastor Sharp prayed it, I'm sure it worked. As the point I'm putting at here in verse 15, I probably didn't ask a good question. But the prayer offered in faith will make the sick person well.
Can I, can I?
Previously when it came to faith healers. Does the answer to-
Ed, can I offer a story here? Ed, can I offer a story here?
Sure.
Um, you gave the illustration one time of Kristen when she had her, uh, cancer. And you, yeah, you, uh, you prayed to God, "God, take away that cancer." Which was not a correct prayer, you said. But on the way up, the Holy Spirit, and I'm, uh, using, or you used Romans 8:26 where it says, uh, "We don't know what to pray for." But the Holy Spirit changes that prayer on the way up and hands it to Jesus, and he gives it to God. I use that illustration countless times in Bible studies.
Well, thank you. The story was my mother. I'm sorry. It wasn't Kristen, but it was my mother, and I'm gonna talk about that later, but so I don't lose the thought. My mother was, had, had retired in May, and in October she had colon cancer. And she battled it for five and a half years, and every day I prayed to God to take the cancer away. And God didn't. And God and I had a running battle for many years over that time. Even though I was a pastor, even though I should have known better, it, I had a, I had a hole in my heart. And finally, God did answer my prayer. February 8, February 15th, 1988, what did God do for my mother?
Alderhome.
Took her home to heaven where there is no more-
Death, pain, suffering, sickness.
Okay. Barely an hour before my mother died, I prayed for the first time for God to take her home to heaven. And, uh, my dad and I were running an errand. We got back home. My sister ran out to the car and said, "Mom's gone." And, uh, so yeah, prayer does work, but Dan, thanks for remembering me. That's why I was voted Mr. Spiritual in our class.
But the point I'm- Ed, I'm gonna remind, I'm gonna remind you, you're in church.
One point I do want to bring up, though, in regards to faith healing. And this goes back many, many years. Uh, but there is a faith healer on television that said, "If you believed and you laid your hands on the television, you'd be healed." Many, many people weren't healed. Some people committed suicide after that television program. He's also the guy that, uh, climbed up a tower, said he wouldn't eat or come down until people had prayed hard enough and given $6 million.
Wow.
I'd have let the guy starve. Okay. It's not faith that heals. The almighty power of our God. But that's the faith healer's out. He puts the burden on you to heal yourself when he says, "If you have enough faith, you will be healed." And I want to share one little humorous story with you. A friend and I were at Underground Atlanta years ago, when it was a very nice place. And we were going back to catch martyrs, so we cut across the World Congress Center. And all of these buses were pulling up, and all these handicapped people were getting out. So my friend asked the parking lot attendant, police officer, he said, "Is this a handicap convention or what?" And he said, "No." And I'm gonna mention the guy's name because he's, he's gone public before. The man's name was Benny Hin.
Oh.
And everybody was coming to get him. And this police officer, as we talked with him, said that he was a good Southern Baptist. He said to me, "Gentlemen, I've got one thing to tell you. Everybody that came here in a wheelchair is going home in a wheelchair." So when it comes to the faith healers, be careful. Be very careful when you hear if you have enough faith. So that's the point I tried to make, probably made it too long. Somebody read this one?
When ordinary people pray, extraordinary things can happen.
Yes. I just couldn't resist this picture. When, when you look at all that has been happening and how we are asking people to work 14, 16 hours a day and to have to deal with constant deaths. Granted, the cases in New York are supposedly plateauing, coming down, but what are we gonna see for many, many days?
Death.
People dying. People dying. Our healthcare workers do need our prayers. My friend Dwight L. Moody. He was an evangelist uh, across the world, but especially in, in Chicago, but he actually grew up in Massachusetts. 1837 to 1899. One of my favorite quotes from Dwight L. Moody. You have to remember that Dwight L. Moody was not the most gifted intellectual person. In fact, a lot of people said, "I can share, if Moody can share his faith, I can share my faith." There's a tool that I used in evangelism for many, many years with children called Wordless Book, where you just have colored pages and the colors tell a story. I used that for the children's object lesson with hearts when I preached a while back, or had different colored hearts. And Dwight L. Moody was the guy that came up with it. People have then added to it and whatever, but the colors were, the color of darkness represents sin. Then we have the color red, which represents what? Blood.
Blood.
Then we have the color white. And we have the color green, which symbolizes a new. Gold represents heaven. That came from Dwight L. Moody. But his favorite line, when somebody challenged him, the way he was, and somebody said, "I prefer, prefer my way of..." Bob, looks like you want to say something. What is Jesus' role in our prayer life? Somebody help me out here.
The go-between. He doesn't got, got the Father.
He's the one that taught us how to pray.
Yeah, he taught us how to pray. Somebody read this Bible passage?
Romans 8:33.
Yes. Melissa?
Okay. Uh, Christ Jesus who died more than that, who was raised to life, is at the right hand of God and is also interceding for us.
How does God, how does Christ intercede for us? What does that mean?
He, uh, he died for our sins, so he's interceded in us by making us sinless.
Yes. What does he remind his Father of all the time?
That we are his.
Yeah, he is. Why? He reminds his Father that he did what for us?
He died for us.
He died for us. Hey, Dad, in case you forgot, remember these are the people I died for. I know they aren't living the way they should, but God, remember. My Father, please remember. When I do things like this in our Bible study, please realize that I know it doesn't work that way. It's called an anthropomorphism. That's a big, long Greek word. It simply means assigning human characteristics to God. So when you see me do that, it is intended with a little sense of humor, but also to bring it down to our level. So-
You know, hey, Ed?
Yes?
When, when the disciples asked Jesus to teach them how to pray, he taught them the Lord's Prayer in the first words, "Our Father."
Who art in heaven.
Yes.
Our, our Father. It isn't just my Father. It isn't his Father, but it's our Father.
When, when I was a pastor in Jacksonville, Florida, my congregation asked me to do a Bible study. The Lord's Prayer. That's another class unto itself. What I'm talk-
See, I was-
I forgot that one too. Friend talked about that book. His Bible passage.
We ought to pray for your mind and spirit, because the spirit intercedes for God's purpose in accordance with the will of God.
Yes. Okay. What happens when I don't know what to pray? Pray for the words.
Words.
Or ask the Holy Spirit. I don't know what to pray for, but you do. Please take this to the Father. He can even take, have you ever had something where you had a tremendous relief and you let out this big sigh? Considered a- My wife has a tendency to sigh at various times. He would always ask her what she was sighing about. And I know for my wife, many times that was actually a prayer. Unspoken, but still a prayer. Because it comes from the Christian's heart and Christian's mind. Questions or comments for you might have? I don't know. I don't think I want to go to this one, because it's death and- Because it's death and... I have 10:08. I said, "It's dark times." You have it. You don't have to...
I was thinking about, thinking about why... It's interesting because sometimes it would be, like, why would I call my elder about this? This is such a small thing. And this is a small thing. And but if you think about prayer as, it's not like a trip to the bank first. The actual conversation is like going to your manager to ask for help with something. It's like the, one of the... I haven't talked to my wife today, but so I I don't really need to talk to her, you know? Or I think I can solve one time. I saw, I really don't need this conversation. And it sounds absurd because it's some prayer is... It's like it's a reflection of...
In my ministry, people would say, "Pastor, it's not that big a problem, but could we just talk?" I'd say, "I love little problems. What I don't like is little problems that become big problems." Come to me with your little things. I was challenged at a presentation. And there was a computer in town. The doctor was, "Dear, give me a parking spot close to the terminal." And a lady said, "I don't think that's right to pray about that. God's got better things to do than giving you a parking spot." So I said to her, I said, "Is your God too big?" I mean, mine's not. Not too small either. I can go to him with what?
Everything.
Anything. Remember the hymn verse we started with? What a friend we have in Jesus.
Everything in prayer.
Everything. Big or little. Everything. Anybody else have any comments?
I wanted to say, a counselor said to me one time, "If God seems far away, do move."
Yes.
And I thought, wow, you know?
A lady made me a needlepoint of that.
She did?
Yep, because she said to me, she said, "I don't feel as close to God as I once did." And I said, "Since we have an immovable God, who do you think moved?"
Enoch walked with God.
Yes.
That was a really good...
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll close with prayer. Dear Lord God, Heavenly Father, we come into your presence today. And we know, Lord, that we are always in your presence. But today, as we gathered together to study prayer, Went to all things. You know what is going on in our country and around the world. We are not here to question your why or to question your will. What we are here to say is, "God be praised." He is our God at all times. Lord, we ask you to be with all of the healthcare workers. Lord, we ask you to be with all of our friends and relatives who may have contracted this virus. If it is your will, Lord, we'd ask you to heal them. If not, we'd ask you to graciously take them into your arms and lead them to heaven. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you. And by the way, if you have any questions or things you'd like me to talk about in the next lesson or the next lessons, just email me during the week or text me or call me.
Thank you.
Be alert and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.